So next is our COVID update. Is that correct? Okay. Welcome Boulder County Public Health and thank you for joining us yet again. We really do appreciate all your time.
Thank you Tina and thanks board members, appreciate it. I will pull up my slides here, bear with me for one second. And if somebody can just let me know when they see those.
We can see them.
All right, thank you. So what I'm going to do is go through a quick data update, talk a little bit about vaccines and the variant that we are all paying attention to. And then in addition to that, Helene is going to give an update from Brumfield on the data that they're seeing. And then we're focusing a fairly large majority of our update on behavioral health indicators for school age kids. So I'm keeping my update a little shorter and the bottom line here as I go through these is the data is looking good. As, as you all know, this is our indicators, we are, we are still in orange in Boulder County. We, two of the three indicators for us are in green at this point. And the only indicator that's still high is our two week cumulative incidence rate. And this was from this morning, was at 295.3. We are a little less than two weeks where this is about eight days as of the 24th of January that we've been in the orange and have a stable or declining incidence rate. So this is all good news for us, we're headed in the right direction. As you'll hear me talk about, we can't, we can't let up our focus until we have vaccines fully out in our community, but our data is headed in the right direction. This is the metro Denver area data, as you can see Boulder County is in the red here. This is the seven day moving average of cases. We all saw this little bit of a spike associated with the Christmas and New Year holidays, but it was managed and is effectively coming down as you can see here. These are, I put all four graphs together to just make this quick. Our cases are consistently coming down, our positivity rate is consistently coming down, which is excellent, means we have plenty of testing out in our community, our hospitalizations, our on a strong decrease and our deaths are also on a decline. All good news as, as we are moving forward into the spring. This is our, our two week incidence rate of new COVID cases by age group. This is also stabilized and is pretty consistent with most cases either being stable or coming down. In terms of vaccine distribution, we are, we are just about finished up with 1A, will be finished up completely with 1A this week. We are working on 1B and we have about 30,000 folks who are in this over 70 age group. And just a reminder for everybody that's listening, this age group and what you can't see here is what everybody's heard so much about on television, there's a 1B above the line and a 1B below the line. And we've been directed by the governor's office and the state health department to focus specifically on 1B above the line. And that's because that roughly 78% of the deaths that occur in our state are above this line. And this is why there's such a strong focus on vaccinating this group of people first before moving below that line. We still anticipate that we will be completed with these vaccinations in March and then we'll be able to move below the line following that. That is also dependent upon of course, what our vaccine supply looks like and just to, to give you a little more of an update on the capacity for us, we have 31 providers in Boulder County. We can actually do 22,000 doses per week. So we have high capacity to be able to provide a lot of doses per week of the vaccine, but our current allocation is between 800 and 3,000 doses per week. So you can see that the amount of doses that we're actually getting are much lower than the capacity that we have in Boulder County. We are planning as a backup to make sure that we are thinking about as we move forward, if we need, what you've heard about these large pods, but we'll have a, a combination of things, including our providers providing vaccines, some pods and focusing on some pop-up sites that can help us reach some of our priority populations as well. You can all keep informed by staying updated on our website. If you just go to Boulder County Public Health and you go to COVID data, you click on vaccine and it'll take you to our website, which has a whole host of, of informative things on there, including how to sign up if you need a vaccine, all of our providers are on there, as well as a graph that shows how many vaccines we are distributing per day. And then Chris is going to talk about these next two slides before we turn it over to Helene. Chris?
Happy to do this and I'm going to save most of my comments to questions because I know people, this is all brand new to folks, so I'm going to just talk briefly about it. We all know that viruses mutate. This is the standard practice, this is not unusual to see. The challenge for us is that there are probably many more variants out there that we actually don't know about. I don't mean to scare you at all, but at least the ones that we're currently seeing are these three variants. The United Kingdom one, we've seen a lot of that in the press, the South African variant and the Brazil variant. All of these are, are tracked nationally, the CDC has upped their game in terms of surveillance and thus called the CDPHC is participating this broadly because we've now seen these cases, at least 10 cases in Colorado. The concern that we have is greatest about this is, has proven to be true, we're unfortunate that, that this strain, the United Kingdom strain, has been able to show and certainly the South African strain as well, based on epidemiologic data, that they're probably likely to be spread more quickly. And you see that evidence in the United Kingdom. We're very concerned about it in Colorado, because if that variant is, becomes the dominant variant in our community, then we're going to be worried about a bump up in the cases that Jeff just talked about. We're also starting to see, and it's unfortunate that this data was released a little too early, because it's suggestive that these variants, particularly the UK variant, the B117, has been shown to have maybe increasing severity in the infected people. Now that doesn't mean that the disease is severe at this point, but we're tracking this very closely. And finally, the most important two things are that the vaccines that are currently in preparation have probably been tested against these variants. Remember multiple Moderna and Pfizer had clinical trials that involved multiple people across the world. So the people that were exposed were likely exposed to these variants that were out there. So that's currently what's happening. Next slide Jeff. So I think the unknown for us in terms of the variants in the schools is that we think there's no, going to be no change at this point. We'll still have to watch very closely, the surveillance is happening in Colorado, we probably, the state probably tests anywhere between five to 10 different sites in the, in the state, multiple sources of these variants using our influenza watch program. So we're going to be watching very closely is whether or not this is transmitted broadly in the schools. And then we have to be ready, you know, because as we see Jeff has pointed out, the data is going down, but we all have to remain vigilant. We'll still be coming back to the board and talking about those, those hopefully continued decreases in the schools, but we have to watch very closely. And finally, the most important thing that I wanted to say to the board and to the public is that our prevention strategies, the layers that Randy and our, and BBSD has really put in place are all protective, masking, physical distancing, small groups, avoiding large crowds, disinfecting, washing our hands and doing all those things. And then now adding the vaccine are all layers of protection that we should continue to, to emphasize. No reason to panic yet, but I would say let's double down on our prevention strategies and really can make a difference as we watch these variants and, and, and watch that, making sure that they don't have significant impact on our communities. And I'll stop there.
Returning it over to Helene.
Yeah, thank you. Everybody, thanks for having us again. Hope everyone's having a good month. So I will just also kind of quickly go through our information and just add on a little bit more. So in Brumfield County, our, our numbers, we're still, so we are also considered level orange and in terms of where we're seeing our COVID cases, we are kind of in a, almost just staying steady. So just slightly lower on our positivity rate, so just went down just under 4.8%. So we're hopeful that can kind of watch that continue to go down and mirroring similar, similar to what we're seeing in the state. Our case incidents or our new cases, that slightly went up, but it's kind of all hovering in and around the same number. So we're still technically upper in that red level, but we're, we're kind of teetering a little bit lower where we, we will continue to watch that, see where things continue to go. And as Dr. Abina just said, it's, it's all of that layering that really helps to, help bring down these cases overall. And so when we kind of look at what is Brumfield County trends looking like, we see about, you know, the last three weeks, we see just a slight uptick, so very, very minor, but we'll just continue to watch that. We know we do sometimes see some slight correlations with uptick with holidays. And so, you know, as we think about these, the next upcoming three day weekend, just people being really careful and mindful of not, you know, getting together with other households and bigger groups and ski events, things like that, everything to try to continue to practice being safe, social distance, wearing masks, all those things will help keep our numbers low. And this is just a quick visual to show, just, you know, as we, as we've shared before, we know that we need to be real careful with that, that high school age group, but that is where we tend to see more of our cases. And so this just is a quick visual of the different age groups, preschool, elementary and middle school. And just the importance of, of, of wearing a mask and, and if someone else in the household tests positive, really important that, that those students also stay home. They shouldn't be attending, you know, sports or other activities, just to help prevent spreading the virus any further. And then just to share a little bit more, I know we've, or talked a little bit about the vaccine rollout, the COVID vaccine rollout, that, you know, every, every county, it looks a little different in terms of the allocations that everyone's getting, that varies each week. We are working closely together with Boulder County Public Health, we are working with BBSD, their teams and the state health department and other hospital partners. So this is just kind of a snapshot of where we're, where we're looking at in terms of phase 1A, in terms of the vaccine rollout for the state. And that partnership involves hospitals, retail pharmacies, our goal of getting 70% of Coloradans that are 70 and over vaccinated by the end of the month. And so that's very dependent on the vaccine that we get in the state and how that, just how we can meet that goal. And we're also trying to make sure that, similar to Boulder County, that we have our, our healthcare workers in phase 1A and 1B above the dotted line as well vaccinated. So it's a group effort for, from community clinics, community partners, other LPHAs, hospitals, everybody's really stepping up and we're just, we're doing really well in Colorado with the amount of vaccine that we, that we have so far. And then to just highlight in, in Brumfield County specifically, all, we have our, our long-term care facilities with assisted living as well, they've all had their first dose for the COVID vaccine. So that's residents and staff, which is great news to report. And we're near completion of our, our, our 1A and working through our, above the dotted line of the 1B progress. And this, this is just a photograph of just some of the outreach we've been doing, we've been trying to make sure we're hitting those 70 plus in different, different senior residences throughout Brumfield County. So we're really, really excited to be able to share that in, in combination with effort from the hospital partners as well as our pharmacy partners and our health department, we are looking at 40% of 70 plus residents, 70, so that someone's 70 and older being vaccinated in our county. And this just kind of gives a quick visual of the other age groups. And just, we try to keep that communication going. I know it's very frustrating, everybody, it's hard to try to understand, to share this, how little vaccine we are getting in terms of the doses each week. It changes, it's very small, it can be 100 doses a week for the whole entire county. So we're trying to keep that communication out there. We have a vaccine interest form that we continue to compile to, you know, get people on list and, and increase information sharing as we know more and just ask for everyone's patience, because this is going to be a multi-month rollout as we, as we move forward. And the state has just recently launched a phone number as well, that's a call center to answer questions for the public. So that is included on this slide as well too, 877 COVAX CO. And this is just a reminder of our, just our information that we keep update each week with our COVID score, our weekly business, our weekly scorecard and just information, other information about the county. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much for that. And then are we moving to the mental health piece from Boulder County?
Yes, and I think Steffi is going to present that.
Yeah, hi everybody, thanks for having us this evening. I'm Steffi, I'm a surveillance data specialist at Boulder County Public Health and I'm going to present this evening on the mental health data amongst 10 to 17 year olds, along with running our slideshow. And I'm really hoping for no technical difficulties in doing that. I'm really pleased to have Marcy Campbell join me tonight. She's the Boulder County Public Health Community Mental Health Initiative Coordinator. And she's going to help just provide some context to the data that I'm going to be sharing with you. And so with that little introduction, I'm going to hand it over to Marcy and I'm going to share my screen.
Thanks so much for having us. Looks like it's up and running, so thank you Steffi for driving that. So thanks so much for having us to share a little bit about mental health and substance use data for 10 to 17 year olds. And so prior to COVID-19, we had significant unmet mental health needs already. And so in our data collection in 2018, over 44 million Americans had a mental health condition and youth mental health conditions continued to rise. So about one in five or nine million adults reported having an unmet need. And as you can see on the slide, Mental Health America ranked Colorado 40th for adult mental health and 48th for youth mental health. And suicide has been a leading cause of death for 10 to 24 year olds. So from our Healthy Kids Colorado survey data in 2019, we could see that 30.5% or nearly one in three Boulder County high school youth reported feeling so sad or hopeless for two weeks or more that they stopped doing regular activities. We also see that 16% or nearly one in six Boulder County high school youth seriously contemplated suicide within the past year from that survey date back the year. So COVID-19, the pandemic really has amplified the need for accessible mental health services and support. You know, as we know, I'm, I'm preaching to the choir, COVID-19 has impacted the mental health of all of us, because it represents a collective trauma and grief event with uncertainty around when it will end. Since the beginning of COVID-19, there's been an explosion in mental health morbidity. From Time Magazine, they report a 700% national increase in mental health distress from pre-pandemic data collection in 2018, with young adults and those with children experiencing the greatest increase. So that's really tying to our, our teens and our parents with young kids. So Steffi, if you could advance the slide, COVID-19 has impacted mental health really in some complex ways. And so I think while we might typically really be thinking about the isolation that stems from stay-at-home orders or online schooling, there are also a lot of other impacts. So unemployment and financial challenges really impact mental health, of course, as we know. And I did mention that young adults are one of the most impacted. 20 to 29 is, has been reported in some studies as really that key age group, but we know our young adults are also experiencing increased mental health. So fear of having COVID-19 or spreading COVID-19 is also something that is on the minds of our young people. TQ youth who may not live within an affirming environment are also impacted. So you can also see other groups such as first responders, medical staff, frontline workers, public health workers. Really that pressure of being on the front lines is very impactful. It's also really impactful on medical staff as sometimes the community has had disbelief about the virus and maybe not following public health orders, as well as of course, what we think about in terms of maybe being those last people to see folks who are passing away or caring for folks with severe symptoms. Emerging studies are also noting that those who have had COVID-19 are at increased risk of mental health conditions following their recovery, such as PTSD or anxiety. So there's a conversation about mental health needs, sometimes, you know, it's, it's really a tricky balance. We know that it's important for us to be socially connected, but it's also really important to be able to follow our guidelines. There's a little bit more nuance and complexity to those impacts around mental health. And so we really wanted to understand more clearly what the local COVID-19 impacts were on our mental health and our substance use. And so Steffi is going to share some specific data that we learned regarding emergency departments that helped paint a, a slice of that picture of how COVID-19 is impacting us in Boulder County. Steffi, I'll turn it to you.
Thanks Marcy. So I wanted to start off by just talking a bit about how, the, the source of our data. This is, this is data comes from what's called syndromic surveillance. It's a center for disease control platform that is, consists of maybe over 5,000 hospitals in 47 states in real time, where data is, is collected and we're able to detect and monitor symptoms of health events even prior to a diagnosis being made, which allows public health officials to determine if a response is warranted, as in the pandemic. It's also an excellent resource for us to monitor other reactions from the pandemic as Marcy was talking about mental health, substance use, heart attacks, things like that. So that's part of the, it's an excellent resource for all of those things. I'm going to be reviewing data from, from five different indicators, alcohol overdose, marijuana overdose, suicidal ideation, suicide attempt and sexual violence in the 10 to 17 year old age group over the course of two years, 2019 and 2020. And I'm going to present this data looking at graphs. So the first graph here shows the alcohol overdose. And you know what, I think I'm sharing my wrong screen. Do you mind if I stop and share the right one? Sorry about that, that's technical difficulty number one. Anyway, so the graph I'm going to show, each graph is going to show like this one where there's cumulative ED visits, emergency department visits on the Y-axis over time, over the weeks of the year. And this graph I added in, just to kind of give you some perspective, we all maybe think that because of the pandemic, that overall emergency department visits to Boulder County hospitals were maybe decreased in the, in 2020, but this graph really compares 2017 data through 2020 data. And it shows that yes, there was a slightly lower number of visits in 2020 compared to 2018 and 2019, but not that much different. And when you look at it by week, just emergency department visits by week, you can see that there was in fact, a big drop in visits to our local Boulder County hospitals, right when COVID, the first case of COVID was identified in Boulder County. And then, but those visits started to resume after our stay-at-home order lifted in, in around May. So we did have a drop, but then they started to go back. And indeed, we saw another little bit of a drop at the end of the year when we went from orange to red on the dial. But the message is, is that the, the overall visits to emergency department hasn't really been affected by COVID as we may have expected. So now when we look at the actual data for the alcohol overdose visits, again, this is cumulative emergency department visits over time and green is 2020, blue is 2019. And in fact, we see that in, in 2020, there was a 14%, well, in 2019, 14% higher compared to 2020. So really wasn't a huge impact in this age group. But when, and you, I, I wanted to show this also as emergency department visits by week, the number of emergency department visits by week, because the person who requested this data was mostly curious about what happened in the fall when school started up again. And it's a little hard to read these, these graphs, but nothing remarkable here, although in the summer, we did see in both years, a bit of a spike in alcohol overdose. For marijuana overdose, again, I'm going to look at cumulative ED visits over time and it's again, about 10 to 11% higher in 2019 compared to 2020 for this age group. When we look at this by weeks, again, nothing that remarkable, although you can see a little bit higher spikes in marijuana overdose visits in the end, beginning and end of the year. For suicide, suicidal ideation in this age group, here's where we start to see a bit of an increase in 2020 for cumulative emergency department visits, so by 4% in 2020. And when you look at this by weeks, there's nothing that remarkable to, to note, other than the spike in 2019. And that does come, occur right around the beginning of the school year. And now when we look at emergency visits for suicide attempts, this sort of correlates with a lot with what Marcy was talking about. Here in 2020, we see that the emergency visit cumulative for suicide attempts in, for this age group, 10 to 17, increased by 31% in 2020. And you can see here, when I mark, put a marker in where the first week in September occurs at week 37, just in the, you know, late summer, early, and throughout the fall, we actually see a definite increase in those numbers. I included this slide, we recently did a presentation for all age groups and compared years 2017 to 2020. And I'm including this slide because I really think this indicator is so important for us to be thinking about. I looked at nine different age groups for that other analysis and all nine age groups for suicide attempts were quite a bit higher. 10 to 17, this age group that we're talking about in, over the four-year course was only 13% increase in 2020. But look at these numbers here, this is quite concerning. And just the fact that it occurred in every age group. And then finally, the last indicator is the visits for sexual violence. And in 2020, this is another big change where it's 64% higher in 2020 compared to 2019 for this age group. And this just shows that it's sort of occurring throughout the year. I included this table again from the other graph, because I think sexual violence is one of the indicators that we saw that were, was most affected as well. Look at these percent increases were quite high. The difference in this 50% compared to the 64% is because I just looked at more years. So in summary, what we see is that although alcohol overdose, marijuana overdose and in some ways suicide ideation weren't that impacted in 2020, the, definitely we saw some big changes in suicide attempts and sexual violence in this age group. I think Marcy was gonna...
Yeah, I'll share a little bit. So you know, as we look at this type of data, there's, there's, there are some strengths of the data and then also some limitations as well. So you know, for one, it's really helpful that we're able to look at severe outcomes related to mental health and substance use and that we can do the analysis by demographic factors, which really can help us to guide the intervention. When we looked at sort of, you saw in, in Steffi's slides where we got to see the whole population, there were some age groups that were much more impacted than others. And so that's really important for us to understand as we figure out, how do we support our community better around the mental health and substance use related needs? Another limitation is that this is only, it's only, you know, emergency department data. And so this is really capturing the most severe outcomes. And as I said, when we, when we try to understand the whole, you know, mental health needs and impacts around COVID, it's a broader picture to help us really know that, but this is just one particular way to tell us about what some changes might look like. And Steffi, you can advance the slide there. So taking a look at this data and thinking about, you know, what, what really can we do, knowing the data that we're learning today and also just understanding, you know, we have focused our efforts, we do a health assessment every five years and so our five every five years, and so our five-year health priority was identified as mental health back in 2017. So we know mental health has been a significant need for a while, and we're learning some new things about COVID. So what can we really do to support that? One is really to share this data and help people understand, and we also have, you know, the opportunity to really see what, what sort of changes that we're identifying. So unpacking those demographics really helps us as well. It's really important for us to think about looking upstream before those severe outcomes that we got a chance to see about today. So, you know, thinking about, how can we intervene earlier? How can we promote help-seeking, help reduce stigma around getting support for mental health and substance use, help folks to access care, and help build resiliency skills among our students and young people? You know, another thing to think about is policy and funding implications. So at the state level, we did see some significant budget cuts in 2020. And there are, a lot of those budget cuts were on, related to substance use and mental health supports at the state level. So thinking about, how do we continue to advocate for these types of policies and budgets as our new year progresses? And just really prioritizing mental health and substance use supports as critical pieces. Something that we did see as a big change during COVID-19 was the opportunity to access telehealth. And so that really improved the ability for a lot of individuals to get supports and services. And so there is some expanded telehealth, so that's definitely good news for our future. But it's also really important for us to think about, how do we get creative in providing supports virtually, and still build the importance of having mental health and substance use supports in, in part of our, our daily experience? So, so that's a little bit about what we wanted to share with you all. And, and think about in the next slide, just what other questions come up for you as it regards to mental health and substance use data? And if there's any questions?
Okay. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate having some of the data to think about. We bring up the term "mental health," and it's good to get some context in what it looks like, and what are the issues that might be the most pressing to our district. So, Board members, and I'm, just because of the, the way my screen is right now, Richard, do you have any questions? I'm just going to go in order on this one, if that's okay.
Yes, thank you, Tina. Just a quick question. And thank you for that presentation. It was good information. When you're looking at the five categories, alcohol, marijuana, suicide, ideation, and attempt, and violence, did, were you able to disaggregate that data by ethnicity and race? And is that available?
Yes. In fact, for that other presentation that I mentioned, I do have all that data separated by race, ethnicity, and also by gender. It wasn't, so it's overall, it's not, for example, 10 to 17, race, ethnicity, and gender, but it's just sort of overall. And I do have that data. I'd be happy to share that. But it turns out that, I can just sort of summarize it for you as well. Race and ethnicity, I divided out by white, non-Hispanic, Hispanic, any race, and any other race, non-Hispanic. And I looked at it as what percent of the Boulder County population did each represent? And was that significantly different in years 2017 to 2019, and then in 2020? And in fact, I found that for all of them, and I, and I, as I said, I do have the analysis for you if you're interested. And it's posted on our website, so I can share somehow that link. But it, it, race and ethnicity does not appear to be particularly a driver in, in this. In fact, so the percentage for each indicator was about the same as Boulder County population. Gender was a different story. The one limiting factor about gender is that it's very binary. The Essence Platform, the CDC Platform, only has binary gender dat, data. And so that's a little bit of a big limiting, I think, a big limiting factor. But what I did find, so, is that for each of the indicators for, for suicidal, for suicide attempts, it affected females more than males. For alcohol overdose, males were affected more than females. For sexual violence, females were affected a lot more than males. Suicidal ideation was a little bit interesting, because it affected females more than males until 2020, and then in 2020, males were higher than females. And marijuana overdose was males more than females. So I, I hope that gives you a little bit of an idea of the overall, anyway, ways that this was affected.
Thank you very much for that information. And yeah, if you could share that, I'd appreciate it. Also, there's no way that you can get the 10 to 17 age group disaggregated data by ethnicity?
Yes, I absolutely can do that. It takes time, is all, but I for sure can do that.
I would be, really appreciate if you could send that over, too.
Yeah, that, as I said, I don't have that readily available, so that I will have to work on that and provide that. But I'm happy to do that.
And then I would also add that our Healthy Kids Colorado survey data is just aggregated by race, and we also see, you know, of course, gender, but it has a little bit more information in terms of gender there for us, and then also by sexual orientation. And so that's, that's helpful as well.
Okay. And I, I think we'll be able to put these slides onto our board docs when we're done, if that's okay? And then we'll add the ones that Richard brought up, that Steffi will provide us as well.
Yes. Do you, do you want me to, is there a place where I can send you the link to that slide set?
Yeah, you can send it to Randy Barber, or me, or Laura Schaefer.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'll pass it along. Kathy, do you have any questions?
Richard, was that all you had?
Yeah, that's all I had. Thank you.
So I just have a couple of questions. One was for Dr. Urbina. So I think I understood what you said about how we test for the variants. Is it, is it like, we just test a certain number of samples? Is that right? We don't test everyone? So how are we tracking the new variants? Are you, I just don't understand that process.
Happy to answer that question. I know I ran through those slides very quickly. The machinery to actually develop, to sequence the genomic code is very complicated. Not every laboratory does this. So they're not able to, and it takes time to do it. So they're not able to actually get every single PCR test that we've done to actually test them. So they take a sample of them. And we have this surveillance that we use all over the state. It's called the Syndromic Influenza Surveillance System. So we use that same connections that we have around the state to take certain samples of the PCR tests that are done in those communities, send them to the state batch, and then track and look for that, those variants. And each of the variants, and you've heard about the S gene drop, well, that's one of the, that's the B117 variant that we can actually detect. Some of the other variants have different changes that we're, we're tracking, but we're taking a percentage. And I can't tell you exactly how many, but it's probably less than 5% of all PCR tests that are done statewide. But, you know, we've now only had 10 variants that have been discovered. There are certain, there are sums that are, that are pending, but we know it's here, and we know it's in 20-plus states in the country, so we're tracking all of those now. I don't know if that helps, Kathy. Is it?
And, and it's just to wait and see till we see if it, if we're able to get in front of it with the vaccines, or whether it gets in front of us before we get the vaccines out, pretty much, right? It's a race.
Exactly right. And that's why I alluded to the fact that all the prevention strategies that the schools are doing, and our communities are doing, are actually protective, regardless of the variant. It's still spread by respiratory droplet and, and/or aerosolization. Now, the good news is so far, the vaccines are effective. So when you add those two together, you know, we're still going to have some good prevention strategies. What we worry about most is that if, if that, if this infection, this, these variants take over, and they're more contagious, then we'll have more cases than more hospitalizations and more deaths. So I think, that's why I alluded to the preliminary data says, says that they're getting more hospitalizations, but is that because of the infectiousness of the virus? Or is it because that it's actually more severe? We don't know that yet, and that's why we're tracking all these cases.
That makes sense. Do we have a better sense yet of how we're even deciding that, how the district gets the vaccine numbers? I understand we didn't get what we thought we were going to get, is, do we have any sense of how that is being decided yet?
Can speak to that a little bit. We're, we are working pretty closely with the district nursing, so we have prioritize school nurses, anyone that has like a higher risk as like a healthcare, kind of direct patient caretaker for staff. So between Boulder County Public Health and Broomfield Public Health, we've been knocking off most of that staff list. And then the projected timeline for, as we move forward, what we call below the dotted line, is hopefully the beginning, the end of February, beginning of March. And I know we have some hospital partners, like Children's and UC and ACL, that are all, are all also in the realm of helping to get educators vaccinated, once we do get that green light, once we do get more vaccine in the state consistently.
Yeah, so my question wasn't very fully framed. I was just wondering how the state decides how much vaccine we get? And I think we still don't know the answer to that. And I don't think the state knows how they know how much vaccine they get.
There are some formulas out there, but I don't know, it does feel a little bit confusing still, though, because at, at a federal level, we don't always know for sure if there's going to be some impact. And they did have to shuffle some things around, and that we wanted to make sure the long-term care facilities were vaccinated in a timely fashion, because it, it, we became aware, at the state level, we became aware that many were not getting scheduled until February, and late, and, and late February. So that, that did impact the, the breakdown. But it, it does fluctuate still, unfortunately, just from a federal level down to a state level and local. Just, I don't know if we said this earlier, but I forgot to mention it myself, but just to, just to clarify, part of working with Governor Polis's office and the State Health Department, we are looking to prioritize, once we do get to that, below the dotted line, one, the educators and childcare providers will be prioritized first in, in, in terms of that rollout. So that, that definitely is, is a priority and a concern for all, for all of us in terms of helping the schools be open, and, and just kind of keeping everyone safe.
I just had a quick question about one of your slides, Salina, and it showed that the elementary numbers were higher than the middle school numbers? Am I misinterpre, it was just a curious finding, because my understanding is those should have been reversed.
It, it can be just a kind of a snapshot. We've definitely seen the sprinkling of increases in the childcare age group as well. We, we, it's so, it's, I wouldn't say that it's exclusively only that, it's, it just kind of has been how the, it could be related to holidays, it could be, there could be other kind of components that may be, you know, testing, access, there's different things that may play a part in how that has played out.
And so just a question from Marcy or Steffi. If you could pick one of, you had some strategies, and everybody's living in a constrained financial environment. What would, what could we do as a school district? What would be our highest priority to, to work with you all to help address those high numbers in the suicide and suicide ideation numbers? Is there one strategy that you think would be our highest if we had to prioritize?
Sure. I, I think that's, that's always tricky to prioritize just one thing, right? Especially when I know that you all are getting so much, you have so many things on the plate. But I think incorporating the opportunity to support mental wellness throughout the daily school experience would be a key priority. So having this come up as a normalized part of conversation really allows young people to be able to maybe say to one of the adults that they're seeing, hey, this is, this is harder for me. So finding ways to be able to build mental health into the daily conversation, thinking about stress, all of those types of things would be a really key component. And I am always happy, one of the pieces of my role is really about partnering with the school districts and with other community partners. So I'm always happy to have further conversations with Boulder Valley School District to see how we can really be of support in guiding what might be those, that one or that top, based on even age, too, so.
Thanks. So I, I think that's all I had, Tina. Thanks.
Okay. Donna?
Just a few comments that I've heard from community members and people that, I'm, I'm a bit concerned as well for those that don't get reported, that, you know, to sit and obsess over it or think about it. Someone sent me some information from the Nevada School District about kids searching on their computers and their devices from school, how to commit self-harm or suicide. And I realize we have the hospital data, and we have self-reporting, and I know of a student recently that was put hospitalized for two or three days because a friend said, you know, she was talking about it. So that, you know, then, then the, the parents became concerned, and she went to the hospital. But what I'm concerned about is, is there a way, the people that aren't reporting, or, you know, they, we find out when, almost when it's too late, when they arrive at the hospital, or, or they, you know, somebody fills out a survey. Any suggestions on, I, I like the suggestion on, you know, bring it up more often and talk about it, but do we have any way of looking at devices like they did in the, in this other school district to find out, you know, are kids really obsessed with searching about this? That's one question.
Sure. I, I'm not 100% sure in terms of, you know, do we have a way of doing sort of, you know, internet or electronic surveillance to understand what young people are searching? But I'm happy to look into that and, and get back to folks to see if that's a possibility on some level. I think, you know, what, what comes up as a key point, again, is just reminding young people that this is hard, this is a hard time for all of us, and we can have difficult times with, you know, having an age-appropriate way of saying it, of course, but just reminding folks that it's important to reach out and seek help when you or someone that you're connected to is struggling. And I think it's always helpful for, you know, the educators to also, there's training such as QPR, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer. It's a really helpful one-hour training that could even be done online, that helps adults, because adults, the positive adults are really key, as well as the peers, to be able to ask those questions when they maybe see something a little bit different about their student, you know, to ask them more about what's going on, and really be able to approach that topic. Because I think that is the challenge when we're navigating so much right now, is being able to see that while we're all under stress, it's still important for each and every one of us to be able to bring it up, have a conversation, know that we might be having more anxiety, more depression, more withdrawal from some of our normal activities. And so how can we really normalize having that conversation? And reminding young people about some of the things that do help, like reaching out and talking to a friend, or moving our bodies every day, trying to get good rest, turning off the social media and electronics a little bit before bedtime, so we can start to rest our minds a little bit? So I think those, those types of things really do help. And again, more than happy to continue the conversation and, and be a resource and support.
Thank you. Thank you for answering that. It's really a tough topic for me to even think about, having been impacted by my own brother taking his life. And, and, you know, it's, it's after it's too late. It's not a hospital visit or a survey that was filled out, it's just done and it's over. So just trying to catch it early enough. Anyway, off to just one other question that's on the other side of the aisle about, I have, my daughter-in-law teaches in another district, and they're using the BiNEX now, and I had sent that to the board members today. Any reports from Dr. Urbina, or anyone on, if BDSM could move in that direction, or which school districts are using it, and how helpful that is for our teachers, students, staff?
I'd be happy to answer that, Rob. But do you want to talk about our discussion first? What do you think?
Well, I, I would say that, thank you, Dr. Urbina. Thank you, Donna. I think that that's something that, that we are considering. I think that, you know, we obviously have been partnering with COVID Check to, to do those COVID visits, or the, or the script, the, the testing, both at Centaurus, and then doing the mobile sites, which has been highly successful. I think what we're considering right now is the cost associated with the BiNEX now. I think what we're considering right now is the cost associated with the Binax now and to what extent does that, do we need to continue to do that in addition to the COVID check testing? And so I think that the staff has been working with that. We'll be bringing a recommendation forward on that. But certainly, the ability for our teachers and our community to be tested is an important layered strategy. But that's something that we're looking at, we're considering. I think there is some value in it, but I do think that the cost associated with the Binax now testing is much higher than what was initially reported we thought would be. And so that's just something that we're having to consider.
Thanks for answering that. I just didn't know. I was just aware that Brittany got hers in the mail and I was like, wow. And so I wanted just to fill us in on how that was going. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Kitty, any questions?
Yes. But the first thing I want to say for those watching at home is I laughed, not because of anything that Marcy was saying, but because somebody's dog barked, which got my dog barking. So I just don't want anyone to think I was being disrespectful of anything. So I do have a couple of questions, first about vaccines. So correct me if I'm wrong, so teachers and, I mean, I'm assuming Paris and everybody who works with kids will be in 1B, is that correct?
Yes. So we call it below the dotted line, if that makes sense.
Yeah, right, below the line.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Also, are people being vaccinated where they live or where they work? Or, because I know I signed up with Boulder County to get notified when it's my turn. So how does that work for the teachers? I mean, is it going through the school district? Is every, well, stop asking and see if you have an answer.
Sure. And if anyone else wants to chime in, feel free to. It looks a little different sometimes in each county. So, and there's, there are a lot of different opportunities out there to get on different lists. But definitely Boulder and Broomfield, we both have means of trying to support connecting the school staff to our vaccine that comes into the county and to the health department directly, as well as we're trying to kind of be a partner, connect them with the school, with the pharmacies that have been working with us. And then we also know that there's some hospitals that like Children's will also be collecting names. So we have helped connect them with the HR teams at BVSD and that's going to kind of continue to evolve as we get more clarification of how much vaccine will be coming in to the state. So it's kind of multi-pronged in that someone might get it where they live, as well as they may get it where they work. And it just, sometimes it depends, one opportunity may come up faster than another opportunity.
Got it. Yeah, and so I can see how that would make it really difficult for somebody who wanted to be able to track, okay, you know, what information are the teachers getting about when they're going to be vaccinated? Because it could, sounds like it could come from any number of places.
Well, I, and I'm not sure if Stephanie is on this tonight or not, but I know that, I know that information had been shared to BVSD staff. So I'm not sure if anyone else wants to speak more to that, but I do think that they've tried to put that information out there.
No, I'm happy to respond. So for those employees that we have above the line, all have either been, 99% have either been vaccinated or have standing appointments. And really appreciate our partnership with both Broomfield and Boulder County Public Health to make that happen. You know, Kitty, to answer your question, I think that we want to be here for our employees. And so while, while folks may try to find other avenues where they live outside of the district managing that, that we will be taking the lead and making sure that, that we work towards providing that information, clear guidance and direction on how to get those appointments and how to prioritize those employees within our system. And then if folks have, they want to go on their own and do some other things based somewhere they live, to what Helene's saying, that, you know, the way that these vaccines are coming into the different health departments in different counties is different, right? And so there may be people that get on multiple lists, but they can count on us to make sure that they're on a list for us if they, if they don't want to go through those other opportunities or if they do live in Boulder County. And I don't know if Mike, if you wanted to add anything else or anybody else on the call.
So, Dr. Anderson, you're absolutely right. What about that? The thing about what we've done so far, who we vaccinated, they have received a letter from HR basically letting them know, here are the five sites that we're partnering with. In this case, it was Safeway Stores. We had it in Longmont, Boulder, to go get vaccinated with the exact day and the number of doses and when they could get it. So a lot of people have responded and done that. So it's worked quite well. We've had a few little blips, boots in the, in the system, but we've been able to get that done because some of the links didn't work with their browsers and things of that sort. But it's been pretty successful so far.
So then that brings up another question, is each county gets their allocation of vaccine. And is that based on population? Could it be based on how many people work there? I'm just wondering how those decisions are made, if you even know.
I wish we knew, Kitty. Is that, you know, the governor's making some decisions, the federal government's making some decisions, CDPHE is trying to standardize that across the counties. Each of the counties is working on this independently, you know, so we don't necessarily have a perfect strategy yet. You know, I think we're trying, and Helene put her website on, in her slides. We have a website in Boulder County as well. So you can go to ourboldercounty.org and you can sign up, as you probably have done already, and get any notification and finding out where those vaccines are available. So unfortunately, it's still a mishmash of systems. And, but knowing that, really, we're all waiting for more vaccine. That really is the bottom line. And when that more vaccine comes, we'll have plenty of providers and plenty of people ready to take the vaccines, hopefully. There'll be that connection soon, so.
And I'll just add that, I mean, for any of the BVSD staff that's listening, we are absolutely prioritizing you guys. And so we know that everybody, we wish we had more vaccine now, but we will definitely work very quickly, Boulder and Broomfield together, to make sure that we get the educators vaccinated. We know how critical this is and how important it is. So I do, I don't want people to feel like they have to hurry and find lists and lists out there, because we absolutely will make sure this happens quickly for the rest of the BVSD staff.
I really appreciate you sharing that, because, and I know that I've shared this with both you and with Jeff and Dr. Urbina. You know, for some people who get their news through social media, they'll see posts of people saying, I work here and I got my vaccine, right? And then those are, that information is kind of coming into the district, you know, framed up like, why aren't you fighting for us to make sure that we get the vaccine? And we've done everything that we possibly can to prioritize our educators and our employees. I think it's important for the public to know and understand that. We'll continue to fight for that. We'll continue to push to make sure that educators are prioritized, that when vaccines come in, that I think that this pandemic has shown in our community the importance of our schools being open and having folks vaccinated to operate for not only just the widespread good of our community, but for business, so on and so forth. So I think, I appreciate you sharing that, that we're doing everything we can to prioritize our educators within the parameters that we're given. And while some folks may see things on social media with folks making claims that somehow they cut the line or got a vaccine somehow, some way, that that isn't being widespread, that actually, that what we're doing is within, you know, we're doing everything that we can to make sure that happens for our people.
So I have one more question. So I heard that Governor Polis has called for using the vaccines that are being saved as the second vaccine to go ahead and use them as first vaccines for, so more people can get that. And I just wondered, and I guess this is for Dr. Urbina, is, one, whether you know whether that's actually going to happen? And two, what would be the impact of that?
I don't know if that's going to really happen. I know that they're trying to simultaneously deliver second doses for the folks that are already been immunized, particularly folks, as Helene talked about, in that Phase 1A, long-term care facilities, healthcare workers, those are still trying to, we're still trying to get those second doses to those folks, because they're at highest risk of being in contact. So that's still happening while we're rolling out, as Helene talked about in her phases, I loved her slide, is that we're trying, as we get more vaccine, trying to roll out, finishing that 1B above the line and then starting with the 1B below the line. So that's hopefully what's happening. There is a danger if we don't, in terms of not having people completely vaccinated with those two doses, because that's the greatest optimum level of protection if you get those two doses within that three or four-week period. There is a danger of not getting that optimum protection. So hopefully, as that vaccine rolls out, we can finish doing the second dose and add the first dose. And you'll see a lot of strategies across the world. The UK is doing, you know, spreading it out over weeks. And there's a danger there, I think, of not getting people fully vaccinated. So you give partial vaccination to some people, but not full vaccination to others. So there's a trade-off there.
And I'll just chime in a little bit more, that I think that maybe the worry there was that if anyone was sitting on vaccine, they shouldn't be sitting on vaccine. So I can give you with 100% assurance that Boulder and Broomfield County, like, as soon as we get it, it is going out and it's going into arms and getting into appointments. And so I, we don't even get the, there's not even second vaccine sitting to like, use it somewhere else because, second doses, because as soon as we get it in, it's going into those appointments for those second doses. So I think it's, you know, partly the messaging, I think, was just to make sure that no vaccine should be sitting anywhere. And so I just want you all to know that Boulder and Broomfield County are moving it immediately in terms of getting appointments scheduled for eligible individuals.
Well, thank you. Because one of the things that concerned me about that is, are we going to have people half-vaccinated and not realizing that it's not good enough and, you know, not helping as much as it should? And so that's all my vaccine questions, or comments. So I had one from Marcy, though, for about, talking about mental health and talking about, you know, checking in with kids during the day. Do you all recommend or do you know if anything is going on with students being led, say, in activities that can help reduce anxiety, like mindfulness or meditation? You know, anything like that to help them self-regulate better? Because it seems to me if we could teach our kids, you know, how to self-regulate, that would be helpful. I'm not saying it's going to prevent, you know, all suicides, but, so what's your take on that?
So just to clarify your question, are you asking if I know if those things are happening currently in the district?
Well, yeah, and I guess that question would be for somebody in the district.
Right.
Yeah. Is that something you would recommend?
Yes, I would definitely recommend consistent social emotional learning. So young people are getting the skills around, you know, still having that daily input around those social and emotional skills, as well as things like mindfulness are really helpful. And, you know, there's a variety of ways to boost resiliency and think about skills, you know, in terms of self-regulation, even metacognition, so thinking about how we're thinking. So, gosh, it seems like that really was hard for you. What do you think made that tricky? So just some of those types of things can be helpful as well. Things like restorative conversations, so teaching those skills to students and classroom teachers are really valuable. So there's really a variety of factors, but I think, you know, it's, it's the different layers of things that could be useful and mindfulness certainly can play a part.
Yeah, I certainly hope we can have, you know, do everything possible. Yes. Rob has an answer.
I do, and I'm going to ask Margaret to weigh in a little bit. Board members, as you'll recall, you know, we, our Student Support Services team built out a series of trainings and resources for our teachers as we came back into school with lessons as part of this mindfulness, building this resiliency as well. Margaret, do you want to talk about that for a moment on some of the things that we've done there? And then also, board members, as we get into our part of the COVID update after your questions, we'll talk a little bit more about what we're going to continue to do and how we're going to expand some of our supports and accesses for kids. So, but I'll turn it over to Margaret.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I think what's important too is that even pre-COVID, Kitty, there were a lot of, Director Sergeant, there were a lot of things that we were doing prior to make sure that our systems were in place so that our students were supported. And we've really tried to enhance that K5 implementation of social emotional support, making sure that in middle school, we have social emotional systems during the virtual times with teachers, connecting with counselors on a regular basis, so that students know and understand where to go for the support and their explicit lessons and components and modules. And actually, one of the things that we did was take the inventory across the district, so we could see the cross-integration of vocabulary, so that we were really clear on what we were trying to articulate to students, so that they didn't feel like there was a duplicative vocabulary going on, and whatever they used, anybody would understand them. So those are just some high-level pieces, and we can certainly share more information. Our Student Support Services has done an incredible job trying to find systems that support students in lessons.
Oh, thanks. I had seen that somewhere in communications about teachers being trained, but I didn't quite know what it meant. So, thank you. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, Lisa?
Thanks. You know, Kitty, I'm just thinking, my first grader, I get to see his work on Mondays, of course. And yesterday, one of his SLE lessons was a storybook and some Sesame Street videos that was all focused on mindfulness and on using his five senses to find ways to calm down and reconnect. So it's nice, I think, on Mondays, getting to see some of the work that they're doing. Marcy and Steffi, I don't have any questions, but I do want to say how much I appreciated your presentation and especially that you started it out by reminding us that as a community at large, this isn't a single-year problem and that we have a lot of work to do about this on an ongoing basis. Rob, my question is for you. It looks like our case numbers are looking pretty good. And while we don't want to be complacent, that's obviously a good sign. And I thought the Broomfield numbers with that gap between middle school and high school was pretty interesting. So I'm wondering when we anticipate having a conversation about increasing in-person middle school days?
I would say that that's going to be an ongoing conversation that we'll have with both Jeff, Zach, and Jason over at Broomfield County Public Health. I think that we're really excited about where we are, that we are not only have all of our kids back in person, that we've got middle school and high school in two days a week. In our presentation that you'll hear after your questions, you'll hear a little bit more about our immediate focus, which is how do we increase the amount of supports for our students, especially around some of these mental health issues? I do think that there's things that we'll have to consider as we, as we think about expanding. We are seeing a significant amount of quarantining. I think we're going to talk a little bit about the success stories as the targeted quarantining has had for us. But I can, you can, I can predict an ongoing conversation on that at our next board meeting. Certainly, we'll have Jeff and Dr. Urbina back to discuss that. And we're constant communications on, when's the right time to move forward? Think that the concern that I have is, if you go forward too fast, you're not going from four days to two days. If you get to the cases where you can't go, you could potentially go to four days all the way back to remote. And we know how important this in-person contact is with our, with our kids and our teachers in our schools. And so I think those are the things that we're trying to navigate. Excited where we are, continuing to have the conversation. Now, if the cases continue to go down, that this variant is not, doesn't create a significant impact in our state and our community, I think that it's going to be dependent on those cases continuing to go down to be able to make that a reality. And again, we're just going to have to kind of watch this as it goes. Excited that we are where we are now and that we're maintaining, certainly don't want to go backwards and want to just move forward in a smart manner. I don't know, Jeff, if you wanted to share any other insight on that as well?
Rob, I think you covered exactly what our conversations have been, and I also support that. The thing that we're watching most closely, obviously, is the variant. We are going to get some predictions from the Colorado School of Public Health on some different levels of transmission control, which is the fancy word now, that used to be social distancing, and looking at what would the variant do in those scenarios going forward, from the number of cases we could expect, the number of hospitalizations and ICU surges we could expect based on different scenarios in Colorado of what we know about the disease now. Those we expect to come in the next week, that'll help inform us as well. But obviously, we're keeping a really close eye on that. We're headed in the right direction. So the biggest message here for everyone that's listening is please continue to mask, social distance, wash your hands. We're doing the right things to keep the spread down. And it's going to be critical, knowing that the variant is likely more here than just the 10 cases. than just the 10 cases that have been identified in Colorado at this point. So please keep up those strategies and we'll continue to talk with Jason and Rob and our Chief Medical Officer and Dawn at St. Rain Valley School District.
Thank you so much, Rob and Jeff. That's the end of my questions.
Okay, Stacy?
I don't have any questions, just thank you for all the information and for always being so available and willing to help and give us the information that we need, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, and I just...
Can I respond really quickly to the question Donna had? Because I did a little investigation into it. And the problem is, is that the Binax test is only paid for by the state for a month at the most, and then it falls on the district to pay for. And I know for Adam's toll, it's already a couple hundred thousand dollars. So I think what Rob said is what we're trying to do is pretty effective. And I just think there was some misrepresentations out there about the cost of it and who was going to pay for it.
Thanks, Kathy. I had a quick question, just when we talk about the new variants, there have been a few articles on the internet about upgrading our mask game to double and triple-layer masks. Do we need to be doing that here in Boulder? Or should we be giving guidance to our students to do that? Where are we on masks?
I did see the same article, Tina, and I think it's always reasonable to have more protection. But I think at this point, our recommendations regarding two-layer masks, the surgical masks, are sufficient enough as a layer and then adding other layers, the physical distancing, the filtration. I'm very concerned if people start moving to, and I saw the article, that you move to surgical masks or N95 masks, then you really start limiting people's performance and ability. Because I carry around my N95 mask in case I need it, but frankly, I can't breathe or walk, you know, 10 or 15 feet with an N95 mask. So I think using a strategy that we're doing now with our two-to-three ply cotton masks and/or surgery masks, and then goggles and/or face shields for those who are working that, and then all the other things are reasonable assumptions. And should be, we should continue that. So it's my recommendation.
Thank you. And then I had a question for Marcy and Steffi about the Safe to Tell and whether there have been reports coming through Safe to Tell, whether that's changed year over year, if you happen to know.
Yeah, I know that the Colorado Crisis Line number has increased really significantly. So I don't know specifically the statistic around Safe to Tell. You know, I know that really what we're seeing is any crisis line has gone up. So I would make the assumption that they have also increased, but I would want to just see if there was a possible way for us to get that specific information back to you. But things like the Trevor, the line that's used primarily for LGBTQ use, that's gone up as well significantly. So I think, you know, it's important and, you know, just a good thing to continue reminding folks. And I know that you have all of this information out there, that those types of things are available for people to call in, so.
Okay, and I just want to thank you again for this, for Boulder County Health and all of the great information you give us. And especially for the mental health presentation, it's on all of our minds. We all talk about it a lot and it's great to get some more understanding about this. And I know it took you a lot of time to compile this together for us and we really, really appreciate it.